If you can hear me, call the order. Approval of actually, there are two sets of minutes I think that we need to approve today. Would someone like to make a mention to that effect?
You'd like a motion to approve?
But I have the agenda open on another screen if you can hear.
Yeah, so maybe I can help read some of this, Jim. So we would need a motion to approve minutes of February 3rd, 2020 and December 2nd, 2019.
So moved.
I second.
And so Jim, I don't know if you were able to hear that, but we have a motion from Peg and a second from Karen. I'm guessing that Jim's audio is really cutting in and out there. I would refer to parliamentarians here, but I wonder if we should just proceed with Karen acting in the chair role for this meeting and just might help a little bit more.
Um, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I know that we've got a long day and a timeline. And Jim, I'm not jumping on your body. You're you do this, if it clears up and you're comfortable, just jump in and take over. Can you hear us? Okay, I so anytime, anytime you have clarity, please just take over. So the minutes have have been approved. That's correct.
We have a motion.
We we have a motion.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The the minutes are hereby approved. The next item on the agenda is the report on policy 101 precept program reviews for 2019 and a status update for 2020. Yasmin, would you assist us, please?
Sure. So thank you, Karen. Um, so just a refresher and again, a welcome to Ryan Cooney as our newest trustee on EPSL. Policy 101 is our quality improvement, continuous improvement process for all of our academic programs. And it's a process that was designed a number of years ago by by faculty and academic leaders across the system. And last year, we implemented some changes that were designed to to kind of give everyone more support to stay very focused on learning outcomes and the assessment of those learning outcomes. And we introduced some new data elements that were focused on student success measures and just generally tried to streamline the process for people. Because of that intense focus, what normally happens with these reports is that we convene review committees to discuss the reports together, and that includes all the folks who've worked on those reports from similar programs across the system as well as some external people who have expertise, maybe their faculty from another institution, maybe their employers, and we kind of have a combination. What we did this year instead, because of this new focus on assessment, was we invited an external evaluator whose expertise is in program assessment. She does this at Northeastern University. And we asked her to come in and review all the written reports and then conducted an additional conversation by actually by Zoom before we needed to use Zoom for all these things. But she did that with the report writers. So what you have in your packet is her feedback at a global level for the system of what she what she found. I think generally the and the academic deans who I think and provosts who are on this EPSL meeting could chime in here, but I think we our sense was that it was a very valuable process for faculty because she provided a lot of very specific constructive feedback. And she made some general process recommendations to us revising our rubric, continuing to revise how we how we work with the data and providing more data support and and general professional development training. So I think all of those things, right, this kind of quality work is the heart and soul work that we do academically, but it's also very much future oriented work that when we're kind of in the midst of everything that we've been grappling with to transition to remote delivery and think about what the fall is going to look like, is the kind of thing that rightly so should get re-prioritized. So we do expect to act on those recommendations and to go forward next year with the review process. But at the moment, for the next cycle, we're really recommending a pushing pause for just a few months to to let everybody get ready for fall and get that underway and have a little bit more clarity about where to focus our energies after that. So that is it in a nutshell, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. Or again, I believe all of our academic deans are on this meeting and can answer questions also.
Yeah, I found the report very, very good and very interesting, very helpful. We obviously haven't seen this before. This was a really nice thing to include and gave me some clarity as to how the assessments are working. I had a couple of questions on the on the whatever you call them. The what's a DWFI?
Great, great question. That stands for a D grade, an F grade, a W with which is a withdrawal or an I is an incomplete. So it's kind of an aggregate measure of, you know, students who aren't succeeding.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Jim, are you? Do you have clarity now?
Yeah, it's better. I shut down the whole thing and started over again.
Do you want to take over?
Well, where are you?
We're we're on item number three and we're just hearing comments, and I don't think there are any more on policy one.
All good so far?
We're want to take over?
Well, is there? Is this something, let me see, we're we're hearing a report on precept policy 101. Is it something that we're just hearing about or should we recommend it to the full board? I missed part of this discussion, of course.
The issue is it's being being postponed. Action will be postponed. We're going to pick up on this. Yasmin can can restate what she said earlier.
Sure. So I I don't believe there's really an action item. I really just wanted to make the committee aware of kind of how we're prioritizing work internally. That may ultimately result in the EPSL committee and the board hearing a slightly different kind of final report on the work of the academic year 2020. You know, the reality is our faculty had been in process, starting to work on that when they suddenly really had to shift gears and focus on shifting to remote instruction. So, you know, I think we'll also be looking at the 2021 cycle and and seeing how we might sort of weave a few of the professional development activities together. So I would say the committee can look forward to an update on all this next year. It just may again, look a little bit different.
Okay, thank you. And then the next thing is policy 109 program enrollment and cost effectiveness reviews. Is that yours also, Yasmin?
Yeah, I'll I'll start off on this one also. And again, for Ryan's benefit, so this is another policy of the board's policies that really governs the colleges taking a look every year on the enrollment side of their academic programs and what decisions they're making there around staffing and and program design reconfiguration. So the report you see here provides a summary, kind of a look of the last three years on both overall enrollments as well as overall degrees and certificates awarded. I should just caution you that this is a this is an academic program look at enrollments, right? So it's not all of our enrollments, notably it excludes early college and VAST students because we don't consider them matriculated into degree programs or if they're still in high school, even though they're doing a year of college. So this this is giving you just that kind of narrow focus. It obviously also excludes all of our non-degree students and continuing education students who might be enrolled with us. In many cases, they might be taking courses from these programs. But with that said, what you have here, then you'll see the the details really in the notes column gives you a feel for the kinds of ongoing program renovation, redesign, development and decision making related to programs. And as I had in your your cover memo, last year, the board adopted a change to define what it considered a minimum size threshold. And that was 25 students in the program, five graduates a year. So these notes also kind of attend to those programs that are flagged with a Y. And you'll see some in the notes, some plans there around the programs. So with that overview, if there are any other clarifying questions that people have, otherwise I'll turn it over back to you all.
Yasmin, this is Jen. I just wanted to let everyone know that trustee Bombardier is now on the phone.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions for Yasmin?
And and I'll just remind everybody that our our deans and provosts are all on the call as well.
I can see them.
Jim, I have a question.
Megan, go ahead.
Jim, this is Megan. I have a question. I think Yasmin, this might be more for the deans and provosts. As I look at these two reports together, so the first report from the independent consultant, when I read through that, it seemed to focus on a real need to invest in the student experience and invest in measures that will help faculty ensure student success. And then as I look at the second report, it seems to identify programs that have a small number of individuals pursuing them. And I'm just curious for the the deans and leaders, how you're thinking about the trade off between where we invest in terms of investing broadly in student success versus investing in some of these programs? And I can see the justification and the, you know, the the very compelling reasons for retaining some of these smaller programs. But how are you thinking about that trade off between those two areas?
If I may jump in just to give the Vermont Ed version. If, as you can see in the policy 109 report, we're looking at several of our programs for consolidation. We have a programs that are very granular in nature that probably should would serve the students better if instead of being independent programs, they were options within a program. And that is the direction that we're going to be taking with a critical program review that we're going to be doing in the fall. If looking at where can we create a stronger trunk that then branches out? And that is going to be our response to this situation.
That makes good sense. Jonathan, you have a question? You got your hand up, sort of.
I always have questions, Jim, but in this case, hopefully it's an answer for trustee Kluber's question, which is, I agree with everything that Anna said, of course. But in addition, we look at each program in turn and kind of apply two rubrics. One is trend over time. So if theater has 24 majors today, has it always had 24? Then it's kind of stable and it's okay. Has it gone from 80 to 60 to 30 to 24? Then we're in trouble or the opposite. Has it gone from five to 10 to 50? So that's one thing. The other is that I huddle with my dean of enrollment, Maurice Sweetmet, who's on the call, I can see. And he gives me a sense of what the demand is out there among recruits for this particular program. So if theater has 24 majors, the cutoff is 25. That's what I'm saying, 24. But he says, you know what, there's increasing demand among high school students for a theater program. Then, okay, we'll flag it, but we will not archive it. So that combined with Anna's answer, I think, gives you a sense of how we go about this.
I'm happy to jump in and and just add a little bit to that as well, Yasmin, if that would be helpful or.
Go for it.
Yeah. From the NVU perspective, the only other thing that I would add to what Jonathan and Anna stated is that part of the calculus moving forward, I think, is sort of the the low end role duplication. And so, you know, this is part of the work that we're engaged in right now with our NVU Strong Group, and that is how do we move forward in a way that preserves some of these programs by potentially looking at the duplication across the system? So I think that is another important piece of this that that needs to be addressed moving forward. And it's an active conversation at NVU and presumably it will be as we move into the the system conversation here in the month of June.
Yeah, it might be worth noting that, and I realize that board members are getting materials for four different committees all on one day, but that the long range planning committee is is contemplating this as an area of focus for for task force work.
Thank you all. That was very helpful.
Okay, we all said on this one. The SC faculty fellow nomination.
So this is always a really wonderful thing. The contract with our full time faculty provides for recognition of outstanding tenured faculty. We have a wonderful candidate for you right now, Dr. Greg Petrix. I think you saw the materials in the packet, and I would certainly invite the folks from NVU if they want to speak a little bit more about Greg. But the the other thing I did want to note about this after consulting with the Federation, you know, given everything that has happened since the onset of the pandemic, the contract provides for two fellows, one in the fall, one in the spring. And we'd like to extend another invitation and see if we might recognize a fellow next next spring as well. So you may be seeing that. But otherwise, I'll turn it over maybe to Dr. Collins.
Yes, I'm thrilled to have a moment to talk to you about Dr. Greg Petrix. He is an amazing faculty member, and what I always look for is a faculty member who is truly enthusiastic about his own discipline. And his discipline obviously is mathematics, but I have never seen anybody so excited to teach math in my life, probably across all the faculty I've ever worked with. What I really enjoy about Greg is that he always brings students along. So it's not the top students, not only the top students that benefit from his instruction, but also the students who are experiencing concerns with mathematics, don't understand something. Greg has always been an amazing designer of materials. He uses technology in a very creative way to support his teaching and to enhance the student experience. And as I mentioned, he he's kind of a creator of his own materials. So one thing that Greg is concerned about at this point is how expensive it is for students, for his students to access education. So he's starting to design his own materials so that they can access it free without having to purchase very expensive textbooks related to mathematics. He's already done this in Calc 1. What he's seeking for now is the opportunity to continue to create open source materials for his advanced calculus course in differential equations. And I would be remiss to if I didn't also highlight that he's been a valuable asset at the system level by in two ways, than at least in two ways that I can think of. One is by helping with IR. He is invaluable at the campus level in making sure that we are up to date with our and have truly strong data related to our institutional research efforts. And also, he is now participating on the system wide committee, looking at this duplication that Provost Atkins was referring to and and doing some other system wide work. So I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Melane.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Or what have you related related to this? Church, you got your hand up?
I I wish he I wish I'd known him 55 years ago when I bombed out of calculus. I would have pursued a completely different career. I admire anyone that can make it English.
Is there a nomination that someone would like to make?
And so I think what we would need is a motion to recommend him to the board.
Well, that's what I meant. Thank you for changing my syntax.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Karen, okay. It's been moved and seconded that we forward this recommendation to the full board. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's right, okay. Opposed, none? Abstention? Okay, we're good for this. Next one. Approval of classroom recording policy.
Yes. So I will start here and Todd may also jump in. The committee has heard a little bit about the the background about this, I believe, back in February, when we didn't realize how much we were going to be using video. But we are, in fact, already using video quite a bit. Our our telepresence courses had faculty individually have been doing a lot of experimenting with video. And so we really felt it was time to put in place a policy around classroom recordings. So what you see here is what I would say is it's laying down the base of of starting, creating a new policy for us. There may be some some minor editorial tweaks that we still want to do. But the the next step that's happened now is that we've made a decision as a system to move forward with some additional video recording software that will do a number of things. It will it will provide a better platform for faculty to edit video. It'll provide more secure access and storage. It'll provide clouds based storage of video and it'll provide a much more seamless integration with our learning management system. It'll also be really good for accessibility features like sort of automatically generating closed captions. So for all of those reasons, obviously, it feels like this is a really important investment to make at this time. So what we're expecting is to really roll out the new software as well as training and information about the policy at the same time. However, knowing that we're doing that, I would anticipate we might see some adjustments to the policy as well as maybe some beefed up procedural provisions. But I think those will will have a much better sense of that once we have our arms around how how people expect to use the software and what guidance they're they're particularly needing. So again, right now, I think what we're looking for is to have, you know, EPSL discuss. And and if you're inclined to recommend it to the board for adoption now, again, laying down a base. And we'll go from there. And I'll turn more over to Todd if he had more wanted to say about that.
I think you've covered everything I had to say, Yasmin. I think the editorial tweaks, we are working to create sort of uniform policy formatting and things like that. And I think just given workload and other pressing demands on time, we I didn't have a chance to fully review some of the elements of this policy. But I think the broad strokes of it work. And as long as EPSL and eventually the board are comfortable looking at it again, as Yasmin says, once we get some experience working with the policy and get a feel for how it plays out with students, I think we would want to come back to the board and and likely amend the policy. Again, I don't foresee exactly what areas those amendments would would be in, but certainly to make it congruent with our actual experience. And some of that might also mean providing with input from from our campuses procedures to really walk through, you know, what does it look like for students to to provide a waiver to the recording when requested and and things like that.
Are there any other comments? I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Megan, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yasmin, can you just clarify the you're we're we're being asked to approve a policy related to recording. You shared a perspective on a software purchase, just as background and context, that's unrelated to what we're approving.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, um, my comment is I recognize that these policies are continuously and and forever and ever, I suppose, important things of of how we conduct this sort of business. Being an being an old guy, you know, growing up with four digit telephones and you picked up, we didn't even have a dial rotary. I I'm increasingly aware as we move into new forms of technology and new users of technology that the object of the exercise in many cases is where we started, which is student engagement and student education. And as Todd said, we'll come back and revisit this, perhaps periodically. I would just like us to remember that not to get too tangled up in restrictive policy, even though the words on the page are really necessary. Because what we're talking about is keeping students engaged, learning, going whatever career lattice, as some people would say, that they're that they're traveling. And so I'm just urging us to keep that in mind. Church.
Just two quick things. Does the new software allow a student who has missed a lecture to go back and see it? Can they can they access it and and as if they as if they were in the class but weren't there? And and is that is that a new feature or is that something that's always been around?
Well, that's if you can imagine right now, this this Zoom session, right? So faculty who've been teaching in the telepresence setup, which was really set up for a live class meeting, right? With students in two or three locations. And I think faculty and students have discovered that gee, once we're in this environment, it's very easy to push record and then make that recording available for somebody who hasn't been in the class. The the challenge and the protection, and I appreciate Jim's comments about, you know, the balancing act here. So we very much want to give students access to videos of their own classes. But we want to make sure we're also because technology can so easily go awry, right? And we want to make sure that their privacy is protected and that we're providing those videos in an appropriate way. So yes, right now, we have that capability. But we're trying to provide it in a less clunky way, a more sophisticated way technologically, one that builds in, you know, good ADA tools and that kind of thing.
So I guess that brings my second point, and maybe it's a question for for Jason and his peers. How often do we have students who say, I prefer not to be videoed? I noticed there were provisions there for that. Do we anticipate that that will be a frequent occurrence?
I'd refer that one more towards the academic deans than the deans of students. I think they probably have that knowledge better than we do.
Yeah.
I have had, yes, I have had less than a handful in all of my years. It's mainly students that are in protected environments like witness protection or in domestic abuse or situations like that, and they don't want to be tracked. In technology being what it is, it's very easy to do a face recognition search for somebody that is trying to get somebody else. Can we work around it? Yes, we could ask those students to sit in the periphery of the room so that they are not recorded as effectively. It's not a huge number, but for those few, it's a huge issue.
Very, very well stated. Thank you. Other comments? Other comments? I think this is good. This is forward progress, you know? And I appreciate Yasmin, you're saying, using the word less clunky. That's very much a part of where we want to go. Let me get my other screen back up here. Karen, what are we doing next while I go look for the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I believe we would, i- if the committee is ready to enter, to, uh, introduce a motion to recommend the policy to the board for approval.
I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second it unless somebody else wants it. Okay. All in favor of Karen's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hearing no objections or abstentions, we can move on. COVID-nineteen response and update and planning. Including an exit, possible executive session.
So I would, I would just say, I don't think we anticipate one unless, um, it's warranted. But I'm very grateful to turn, uh, things over at this point to Jason Enzer, who's there on the screen, Dean of Students at Vermont Tech, who's kind of been taking the lead on some of the planning, so.
Thanks, appreciate it. And I would say, I see, uh, Jonathan Davis is on here. So if Jonathan wants to jump in, um, the Deans of Students, Jonathan, myself, Dennis and Heather have all been meeting pretty regularly and talking, so, oh, Dennis is on too. So they can definitely jump in and give anything that I leave out, but. So let me walk you through what I know right now, because it's been a whirlwind of stuff. Um, and I'm going to talk predominantly for Ver- Vermont Tech, although I think it does apply to a lot of the campuses. Uh, so at VTC, we've established a reopening task force. We meet bi-weekly and are coming up with a plan to safely reopen campus this fall. So at our first meeting, we came up with Plan A, B and C. Plan A is that our preferred scenario, the one we're focused on and will implement if it, uh, adheres to public health guidance, is to resume in-person activities, including on-campus housing at our campuses and distance sites for the fall. We put this out as a statement to our campus community on May sixth. We're really trying to drive home to the students that we plan to be open, if at all possible. Uh, Plan B, which we're not saying as publicly, is to resume limited in-person activities, but no housing if COVID-nineteen crisis resurfaces in the fall. Uh, we're very hopeful that won't be the case. Vermont is moving in the right direction, but you don't know what's going to happen by August. So we're planning all scenarios. Plan C, which would be the worst scenario for Vermont Tech, would be to have to go towards remote instruction. However, Anna has been working with the faculty and making this, uh, a possibility if we need to move in this direction. So all three are being looked at. Uh, we are looking at a start date on the same day, uh, as August twenty-fourth. And I believe all of the campuses of, uh, the Vermont State Colleges are looking at this. So that way we can have a similar schedule, um, ending, uh, in-class delivery on Thanksgiving, uh, or before that, and then, uh, having some remote delivery for the end of the semester. Uh, the big thing that'll come into play with the COVID-nineteen planning is that out-of-state students who are being told need to move in at least one, if not two weeks early and quarantine. Um, so that would mean for Vermont Tech, we would have students coming in on the tenth or earlier. Um, it could be one week if we can get them tested and, uh, get the results. So that's still in our planning process. Um, so as I said, I'm in regular communication with what we call the SAC group, uh, the Student Affairs Committee. We all have similar plans, but I do want to reiterate that our campuses vary greatly. Some, some of our plans may need to differ. So an example of this, at VTC, we're looking at having all the students being placed into single bedrooms. We have enough space, we think we can do this on campus, uh, but, uh, Castleton first, say, you know, Dennis is on the call. I don't think that's possible for them. So there will be need, there will need to be some, uh, iterations of the plan that differ, uh, college to college. Uh, so to prepare for all of this, uh, for the fall, I just wanted to tell you the groups that I've attended. Uh, the New England Higher Education Virtual Roundtable was held at the beginning of, um, May with state officials from all six New England states. Um, there was an update from the CDC last Friday that I was on. There's an email listserv being led by Rich Schneider, um, and the AVIC group, um, that has been sending out some different plans. The plans that we put together were a plan for students to move back to get their belongings. That was approved by the governor and we've already moved into that process. Uh, we've also been drafting a reopening plan that would have uniform guidance for all of the colleges in Vermont, except for UVM. They wanted to do their own plan. Um, that's been drafted, but I don't think it's gone to the governor's office yet. Uh, I'm also meeting on a weekly basis and Jonathan's been on these calls as well, and I think Dennis too, uh, with the health service directors from all of the colleges in Vermont. So we're trying to communicate regularly with everybody and know what's going on. Um, I did send some highlights of those notes. Um, I'm happy to discuss any of that with you. Uh, the one note that I didn't send, the most recent meeting I attended was the CDC. Um, some, uh, important things from that meeting. Uh, the federal guidelines are actually less stringent than what Vermont is proposing. So that's always a good thing that, you know, we're not, uh, coming in lighter than the federal government. So specifically, the federal guidance is not requiring universal testing to students returning to campus and not requiring students to come from out-of-state to quarantine. Um, so other states may be letting students just come right before classes start, and as long as they're not symptomatic, they don't have to get tested. Uh, one thing that I thought was interesting, they're recommending that residential students sleep, uh, head to toe. So like, if you have somebody in the bed next to you, first off, the beds should be six feet apart if possible, but you don't have their head facing you, so that was interesting. Um, and then, uh, at VTC, we, uh, laid out our move-out plan. As of, uh, May nineteenth, we sent it out. We've got, uh, almost everybody has moved out at this point. There'll be a few out-of-state students that still have to come get their belongings. Um, but that's worked very well. Students at VTC have listened, they followed our policies. Um, so I think we're doing it in a safe manner. So that's my quick update. And like I said, I sent out notes in advance, so people, I didn't go through everything that was happening. People could ask questions and I'd love for Dennis or Jonathan, if there are things I missed, if they want to add.
This is Dennis at Castle, and thank you, Jason. Uh, you, you, uh, covered most of, uh, our area as well. We have a similar task force, uh, looking at lots of different things. Uh, we do have the, uh, dilemma of a dilemma, uh, the obstacle of a double room, uh, and how do we protect that? We're going to rely on really what the CDC or, uh, Vermont Department of Health is calling a family unit and, uh, hopefully, uh, be able to kind of hang our hat on that as a safe environment, uh, in the residence halls. I would also just add to Jason's comments that we, we are also looking to hold conferences and conferences with residential this summer at some point, uh, soon as we're able to get that clear. So we are working, uh, towards that. And so that should be a precursor to how we, uh, manage our students in the, in the fall. Additionally, um, facilities is an area that I oversee. I just wanted to talk about, we're looking at cleaning protocols, BoSHA, uh, mandate CDC and, uh, looking at purchasing of equipment to, to, uh, make sure that we have a cleaning protocol that meets the, the standards in our residence halls and, uh, our offices and our classrooms. Jonathan?
Yeah, thanks, Dennis, and thanks, Jason, for the great summary. I would just say, uh, also to add, at NBU, um, we're also planning to ask students to come with a personal evacuation plan um, and agree to that plan ahead of the semester, such that if we do make a decision, whether it's from the system or as an individual institution, or there is illness contracted, although, although there's still some discussion about that, that they be prepared to return to wherever they, um, reside. Uh, so I think that's an important step as well to consider, um, as we get ready. And, uh, like Castleton, NBU still also has the possibility of two larger, uh, summer camps towards the end of the summer, that still have a shot, depending on how things go.
And I would just add, VTC, we've canceled all of our summer camps. So I'm very excited, though, that Dennis and Jonathan are going to test this out and let us know how it goes.
Maybe.
About CCD, um, because we are, we are really looking at how we can, um, what the mix of our classes are going to be. We're moving more of them online. We're going to also be doing remote instruction. We're figuring out what classes we have to run on ground. Um, so it's, um, it's not, we're not going to be running our classes as we have published, but we're going to really try to provide a really extensive variety of options for students. Not just online, not just on ground, but a real combination of stuff to meet a lot of different learners' needs. So that's our approach.
Thank you, Joyce. Peg, you had a question?
Yeah, I have actually two questions. Um, one is the ma- the rules for international students the same as for out-of-state? Or do you have something different? That's number one. Number two, if they're supposed to be coming in one or two weeks early and quarantined, is somebody providing meals or how are you doing that?
So my understanding, the international students are the same as out-of-state. It's the two-week quarantine that they would need to come in. Obviously, there, there's some different travel, things that they'll have to deal with. We don't have a large, uh, out-of-state population, so I don't know if Dennis or Jonathan want to talk about that. Um, but, uh, from the meal plan, we are planning on providing, uh, so we have two campuses that are residential, uh, Randolph and Williston. We're actually planning on having all the students live in Randolph for the quarantine for the first two weeks, uh, because we have food service in Randolph. We don't have that up in Williston. Uh, but what we'll be doing is we're going to be delivering, uh, to their rooms. We're going to not allow them to go into the dining facility, because that would break the quarantine.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll speak on behalf of Castle, then I don't know how we would be able to manage, uh, a two-week quarantine. Uh, but if we were required to do that and it made sense, we would be delivering meals, uh, to the door. Uh, we did that through, uh, during N-one, S, S-one, N-one, H-one, N-one, uh, outbreaks, uh, in the past. Uh, we've done that for things like mono and, and other, uh, acute, uh, situations. Um, how, uh, however, I am hopeful, uh, the state, uh, on the summer camps, and we just got them on Friday, but the, the, why I'm hopeful on the exception that the state is making for summer camps is that those who are coming from out-of-state to a summer camp environment are not being mandated to quarantine here on site. And I'm so, I'm hopeful that AVIC and, and, uh, others, as we provide that, those details to the governor's office, that they'll, they too will consider an exception for our students, uh, assuming that the summer camps, uh, issue goes well. And so, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't have to do a quarantine is, is basically what I'm asking for, uh, saying. Uh, but if, if mandated, we'll figure out a way to getting it done.
I'll say, we have our calls weekly with Dr. Levine and the healthcare professionals, and, um, they've gone back and forth. So we haven't gotten direct guidance, but that's a great point, as the question came up, um, at one of the meetings of, is quarantine, uh, mandatory for rooms or is it quarantine on the campus? So I think if we can go with that option, that's going to be easy for all of us in student affairs. I just don't know what the answer is right now.
Thank you.
Yasmin, um, Janet Bombardier texted me with a question that I put in the chat window for you.
Yes, thanks. So I, I could read that aloud. I'm jumping ahead, though, I think if Megan had a question too.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, she was wanting to know how, um, how easy it is to get disinfectant sanitizing supplies. She understands that's been difficult and is everybody having good luck getting a hold of those things? It's, disinfectant is so backed up.
Since Dennis oversees facilities, I think he's the better one to answer this.
I'll start, but I know Sharon's on here as well, so maybe, I, I, I forget who the other, maybe Lit, um, from the other colleges. But I, I will start. So far, we've been able to get our cleaning supplies from our suppliers. Our, uh, acute needs are, uh, gloves. I think everybody across the country are, are having difficulty getting, uh, the latex-type gloves, um, in, in a big quali- quantity. We're hoping that, uh, changes. Our suppliers are claiming that most of those gloves come from China and those, um, uh, lines, uh, have been disrupted. And so hopefully, as those come online, we'll be able to get those, uh, quicker. There's also, uh, increasing costs on that. But generally, generally, I would say our, our belief in, in our ability to get cleaning supplies are, are good. It might mean that we, uh, have them in spray bottles, uh, instead of, um, you know, commercial, uh, residential-type products, but, you know, made to order. But right now, we think we'll have enough disinfectant.
And one of the regulations is that we not only need to have our staff supply it, but we have to have it in the bathrooms for our students to use to wipe down after each time they use it. So, um, I'm glad to hear that. It sounds like we can get them, um, at VTC. And I can't remember if we talked about this or not, uh, for the other campuses. We're ordering masks, so when students move in, they'll have the cloth masks. Um, and, but we're asking them to provide their own thermometers.
Yeah, same here. We just made a major purchase of masks and, uh, wipes. Uh, we believe they'll be here. That'll be our standard in, uh, in the classrooms as well as a daily clean. We've purchased, uh, ordered some equipment for, uh, sanitizing the, the, the classrooms. We're hoping that'll be here on time for us to really, uh, jump on it and, and have a reduced labor cost in the fall for cleaning, uh, classrooms on a daily basis. And so, uh, all of that's in queue for us.
And that's the same, same is true at NBU. I think our, our last remaining large concern, uh, well, not the last, but certainly a big piece of this will be what testing is available, um, come August and where the students will be tested, um, and how quick the turnaround will be. Um, I think, uh, there'll be a, a, a important experiment happening in Burlington this week, um, as, as students return to move their belongings off-campus into Burlington. And, um, they'll, National Guard will stand up a testing site, uh, starting in a couple of days from now. So we'll see how that's going to work. I think that'll inform a lot of, um, decision-making in the next couple of weeks.
Well, it sounds like you gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, are being very well, getting, um, are very well-prepared, thinking through things. Jonathan, you had your hand up before I started to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad Jonathan raised the issue of testing, because, um, we need to figure out how we can test thousands of people and who's going to pay for those test kits. And then how we're going to trace the tens of thousands of people that came in contact with those people. And then how we're going to quarantine anyone who tests positive. And where do we test people? Do I interrupt people as they drive into my parking lots and test faculty and staff and commuter students and have them wait X amount of time until I have the test results? And who's going to pay for the testers? And who's going to pay for the PPE equipment for the testers? And if a student tests positive, that student cannot come to class. Do I therefore have to ask my professors to teach double the amount of sections that they're teaching? One face-to-face and one online? And who's going to pay for all that? So, um, poor Dennis Prue is facing a massive undertaking. It's not an overstatement to say this is the most difficult challenge in the history of my institution. There are just thousands of questions we need to answer and answer quickly. And answer, by the way, not knowing the status of the virus in August, not knowing how much, if any, funding we'll get from the federal government, not knowing how high enrollment is going to be. So, um, um, if you can't get your adrenaline pumping to try and answer these questions, you're not alive. This is the heck of an undertaking.
I agree with everything that you said, Jonathan, but what I would say that makes me feel a lot more confident is the fact that we, we're not in it alone. All of these colleges are coming together. We're talking about plans, uh, we're talking about plans and plans. So I think the biggest question you bring up that we have not gotten a serious answer to is how is it going to get paid for? So for us, we've been talking with Gifford, our local healthcare provider, about having them do the testing. Um, they've actually verbally committed to coming to campus to be able to do this, because we only have a part-time nurse on our campus. There's no way he could test. We're not going to have thousands, but, you know, hundred to a hundred and fifty out-of-state students. Um, it's not, right now, it's not a requirement of anybody in-state. So all of the students from Vermont, and that's eighty-five percent of our students at VTC, do not have to get tested. So that helps, but Dr. Levine has gone back and forth whether that might change or not. Uh, it's not a mandatory requirement to test your employees. You just have to do the pre-screening, so that helps too, but that might change as well. So all great questions, but the one that isn't answered is there's supposedly fifty-five million dollars coming from the federal government for testing. Nobody said where that's going. So I'm very curious, because UVM told us on the call that they're actually billing students individual insurances to do the testing. So that means there could be, uh, copays that they have. From what I understand, if you are a Vermonter, you don't have to do a copay. But any student from out-of-state, and that's everybody we have to test, their insurance may have hefty copays on it. Or if they don't have insurance to begin with, that could be an issue. Or if they don't have insurance to begin with, that could be an issue. So you raise some great points.
I think the thing that we're really concerned about is the social distancing in classrooms. Because, for example, our classrooms are set up to hold fifteen to eight students. And if we have to do social distancing, it's eight. And, and our class size average, um, you know, our bet, our but, we run, we run classes fifteen to twenty to meet our, our budget. And if we have to do class, smaller classes, that creates havoc. What do you do with labs um in on-ground labs that you have to run? And you can only have six or eight in there instead of fifteen? Do you have to do two sections and pay two teacher pay? I mean, it's, it's, I get the, you guys have the residential piece thing thought out, but I think there's, there's all how are you going to stage the academic components of it? When you release students and they're walking down the hall, you can't release all the classes at the same time because they can't all, they've got to be able to pass each other in hallway. It's, I think, as Jonathan said, if you think that this isn't the most complicated situation we've ever faced. I, because I think that, I actually think over time, the cleaning piece is going to become like, there, there are, the data is already showing that it's really being spread airborne, less about, and so I think the cleaning is going to become less of an issue, but I think the airborne stuff and how we're managing people being together um is going to become even more problematic. And so uh this fall is going to be um a bear. From, I will say from CCB's perspective, we feel like it is because our population is very fluid, it's in and out. It is all Vermonters or mostly Vermonters, so the quarantine piece, but keeping people safe and the social distancing gives us great pause.
Yeah, Joyce, that's a great point. I didn't even get into that stuff, but our reopening planning team is talking about all of this. Anna's on that team, uh, our uh Williston uh dean is on that team. Our associate dean in nursing for all those sites are on that team. So it goes well beyond the residence hall. I think for us, that's the first thing, the first jump we're trying to get over. But uh I know Anna's got some plans if she wants to talk a little bit about our classroom space.
Um, yes, we are looking at the possibility of inviting students to volunteer to go remote. Uh, we're working with our IT personnel to look at equipping classrooms so that students could be in their room or at home uh and participate in the class, kind of like a, a split classroom. Um, it cannot be mandated, but it can be invited. And the other option that we're looking at, particularly for the labs, is eh to stagger labs and to have either a Team A, Team B divide. Um, also to prioritize which labs have to be done in person and which labs can be done remotely so that we have options to decrease the number of people physically present at a given time. Um, and me being the never-ending Pollyanna, I was reading eh some research today that the latest mutations of the virus seem to be pointing toward decreased virulence. So um that is something to keep on the back of our minds as a silver lining. It may be that the increasing temperatures will give us a hand. But again, that adds one more item to the equation and to the complexity of this whole planning process.
I was just going to add, I believe that the state of Vermont has, has, wants to take on the responsibility for doing the contact tracing because I know that was one of the issues Jonathan uh Spira raised in terms of how do we do contact tracing? But Jason, you probably are more familiar with the latest update on that. But that was my understanding, was the state that they would do the contract ra- contact tracing.
Uh, it was asked with the health directors of Dr. Levine, and he was somewhat non-committal. Um, I, he didn't say no, but he didn't say we're on it. I think what a lot of the us at the smaller school said is we have health services of one or less people, so there's no way they could do the contact tracing. And I believe his uh, I forget her title, but Tracy in his office was saying she thought they had the ability to do it, but he didn't commit.
Okay, more comments on this. This is all very fascinating, even as Jonathan says it's a hell of a challenge. Um, and as you get Jason or anyone more guidance from Mark Levine, please let us know, particularly if it makes things more complicated or more expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we have a skeleton plan right now, but between now and August one, there could be a lot of changes, so I'm happy, I, you know, I, I send my updates to Pat, but I can uh have Pat uh inform you all. Or if you want me to report or Dennis or Jonathan, we're happy to do that as well.
Okay, thanks.
I see that Megan has had her hand raised virtually.
Thank you, Yasmin. And I'm not, you know, I, I greatly appreciate the, the detail that you're going into here and understand all of the flux. The one population you haven't commented on, and I wonder if you just might provide some perspective in what you're hearing and what you're starting to think about it, is faculty. Do you have a sense of faculty that may fall into vulnerable populations and therefore may not be available? And to Joyce's point, if we have smaller classes, you know, do you have a sense of the impact of that or completely understand that is part of the analysis you're still, you're still conducting?
It hasn't been something our reopening committee has been talking about. We've been more focused on students, but I'm sure that Anna and uh our HR director have been talking about this.
Eh, we do have people that either themselves or their immediate faculty members are immunocompromised or they are in some of the high-risk eh groups. And for those faculties, eh we are expecting them to approach HR since that is a confidential discussion. And from there, we'll go into finding alternatives. But eh yes, it's something that it is in our radar. Eh, I know for a fact of three individuals in my faculty and academic affairs staff that will not be able to come back until there's a vaccine or until there's eh more safety in the process.
And if I could just add, um Chair Maslin, um we are going to try to keep as many of our regular employees working at home as possible to try to avoid any conflicts because it's not just faculty. We have other staff who've got folks with immune compromised systems and, and we're fine. The work in the home is working really well. Or actually, sir, we can, as Anna said, we can make those accommodations and we can minimize the number of folks coming to campus. Obviously, we'll have to have student facings offices staffed and we're making accommodations now with Plexiglas and things such as that and planning for the appropriate um health, pre-health checks as folks come to campus.
I, I just wanted, okay.
No, no, I was just going to say, um, I think you raised a really good question. We've had a lot of faculty who will say, we'd be happy to come back if you can guarantee our health and safety. And Sophie distributed a really good article the other day, like, we cannot guarantee your health and safety. We're all in this together. We are doing a lot of precautionary things. We're trying to put stuff in place, but we can't guarantee that you are going, that it's just not, you're not going to, that you that we can provide a perfectly safe and healthy environment and no matter what, you'll be okay. Um, so I think that, you know, for us, our, we have a lot of faculty who are pushing back, saying, you know, we, you need to be able to guarantee it and we can't. And so we're really trying to figure out how we, how then we can move forward because that gets us into far more legal issues if we, if we were to say, oh, yes, we will, we, we can, we'll take care of that.
That's a great point, and for students as well. The plan that uh AVIC and uh the VSC have been working on is asking a governor to make a statement that um we will not be held liable if a student gets sick or God forbid passes away from this. And we really need to communicate to the students that you're doing this at your own risk. Talk to your healthcare provider. Um, at VTC, we're going to waive the mandatory housing requirement for the first semester. If a student says to us, I'm not comfortable coming there. Uh, we just don't want to pe- put people at that risk if we don't have to. We, we want to return to on-campus housing, but we're not going to do it at the sake of the students' lives.
Okay. Jim? Somebody on the phone wants to speak?
Jim, Peg has a question, and then Nolan Atkins also raised his hand.
Okay.
Uh, just a, a follow-up to the last statement. Um, if an out-of-state student decides they don't want to live on campus, they can come and rent an apartment and go to school and not have to do any quarantine?
No, no, it wouldn't be out-of-state students. These are Vermonters. Yeah, great point. I actually had somebody ask that question.
Whoops.
Yeah, no, 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 this would be like, let's say you live in Rutland. Nor, uh, more than thirty miles away, we have a residency requirement. You have to live in the first two years. But you live in Rutland, you say, you know what, I can commute over there. I would rather make the drive over the mountain, take the risk that way than take the risk of health. Then we would say no.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I think Nolan would like to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to follow up on the, the really good question that uh trustee Clouver asked regarding faculty. Uh, we've been thinking a lot about different scenarios for students in terms of what they might encounter this fall in terms of remote instruction. But you know, this issue of, of faculty is an important one because we have had faculty who have expressed concern. Um, they're, they're in um groups who are at risk. And, and so as we think about the various scenarios for fall, uh flexibility first and foremost is important, not only for students but for faculty. So for those faculty who um feel like that um, you know, they're at particular risk, we're going to have to be flexible in terms of how they deliver instruction. So this is part of, at least for NVU, our summer work in terms of ensuring that faculty are well-prepared for fall. Not only ensuring flexibility for students, but ensuring flexibility in some cases uh for how some of our faculty will need to deliver instruction uh remotely, whatever that might look like.
Church has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Church.
Uh, th- thank you, Jim. This is just a, a note uh to Sophie, actually, to help us, help, help remember this. This has been an excellent conversation and very informative for, you know, less than half of the board. I'm sure the other half of the board is going to be equally uh interested. And as we kind of plan our agenda for when we get together again in a couple of weeks, uh, not only would I be interested in anything that's changed between now and then that you've already described to us, but I think we really ought to take almost an equal amount of time to bring the rest of the board up to speed. Um, it, it is a fascinating time to be a trustee.
Church, thank you, and also it's not often that we hear Epsil's the place to be. Um, someone about to speak when I cut in?
I, I don't think so, but Jim, I was just going to say that we, we have one other uh information item on the agenda.
Title nine. Todd, is that you?
It is indeed. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot to add to uh what I believe we talked about at the most recent board meeting except to say that um we've had more time to digest the new Title IX regulations. Uh, the Title IX coordinators and some other administrators and I had a chance to sit down and talk a little bit about uh what our planned timeline is and um how we foresee a process rolling out to respond to the new Title IX rules and regulations that the Department of Education has put forward. Uh, there, with more time and further digestion of this new language, uh, we're getting better clarity, clarity about what hearing procedures might look like, uh, support mechanisms for uh our students on all uh, in all elements of these types of claims. And really, I just wanted to give Epsil a, a sense of, of what the timing looks like and, and just remain on your radar that at some point, likely in early August, we anticipate bringing forward changes to our existing policies uh to respond to these new regulations uh and changes to the procedures thereabout um to ensure that we are compliant with the new requirements for hearings and student supports. And areas where we have to investigate versus where we may investigate versus where we cannot investigate under Title IX, but may still choose to go forward with a student conduct type investigation. So I, I presume that the board has had an opportunity to read uh the, the fairly concise um and helpful three-page uh pamphlet from the American Council on Education that was included in your packet. Um, I'm happy to answer general questions about the policy. Uh, as I say, I think the timeline is very compressed on this. Our goal is to get some kind of a rough draft policy shortly after the Fourth of July. Work on it through the month of July, reaching out to uh internal folks to get some input, understanding that much of these policy changes are not uh policy changes in the sense that we want to change how we do things, but are policy changes in the sense that we need to comply with federal law and changes with federal law. So the amount of input, unfortunately, for a policy like this is relatively minimal, but we certainly are interested and will remain interested in, in hearing um from, from all areas of campus as best we can over the course of the summer. Again, looking forward to presenting it to this committee in early August and eventually the whole board in mid-August with an anticipated adoption date prior to August fourteenth, which is the required compliance date under the regulation. That's the plan. I, I would throw out there before questions that uh there are a number of lawsuits either in process or pending um seeking to either delay or uh prevent these regulations from going into effect. Um, and we will continue monitoring that process. Uh, but at the same time, I think it behooves us to continue to remain and plan to remain compliant with federal law to the best of our ability and not in any way anticipate what the courts will do and have that uh directly impact our behavior. I think we do want to plan that these regulations will go into effect and need, need compliance by the fourteenth of August, and that's, that's the timeline we'll move forward with.
I, I would just add, I just talked to the congressional delegation that started over the week uh that we just had. And I did raise, uh, one of the issues I raised with them was the deadline for the Title IX regulations to go into effect and ask that they support any congressional efforts to, to delay or extend that timeline. They certainly were very receptive to that and they're aware of the issue. Um, I don't, I don't yet know that there's, there's anything um actively moving forward on that, but I, I know there's a lot of um activities, lobbying activity, et cetera, around that. So again, no promises that it will get delayed, but something to keep an eye on moving forward because we certainly need more time to do a thoughtful and thorough uh creation of, of, of amendments to our policies to comply with it. It's, it's a very extensive change. Uh, what happened in twenty fourteen under the Obama administration was guidance, and this is regulation. So this is more binding on us than what we went through uh six years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions, any questions for Todd or Sophie? Chancellor Sophie, you guys are all being very formal, Mr. Chairman and trustee this and that, and so anyway.
Well, Jim, I'm wearing a tie.
Yeah, I put one on for fun. Uh, more questions or other business?
Mr. Chair, I would say there are um some attendees, um folks from our colleges. I don't know if anyone has a public comment when you get to that as the final item on the agenda, but I just wanted to alert you to that.
Are there people out there who would like to speak or ask us questions, comments? Jason has his hand up.
I, I just want to say um it, everybody's nervous about what's going to happen. I've never worked with a better team, both at Vermont Tech and with the dean of students. So I feel very confident moving into the fall that we're going to be in a good place. So I just wanted to put out a positive message that, you know, my colleagues are amazing to work with. We come together, we do everything we can for the students. So we're going to be in a good spot. And that goes for the people at the OC, Sophie, Yasmin, Todd, everybody is so supportive, so thank you all.
Awesome.
So I don't see any of our attendees with their hands raised, but I, it might be worth taking a moment to invite people to do that that way. And if um anyone did want to make a comment, we will uh unmute you so you can do so. And if anyone did want to make a comment, we will unmute you so you can do so. And I don't see any virtual hands going up.
Peg Flora, you have your blue hand up.
That was from a while ago.
Okay. All right, awesome. Okay. Move to adjourn Epsil for the time being, till our next exciting meeting. Several. Church, did you have a, is this to adjourn or to hand up?
Just, just a reminder to all the trustees, we have a special board meeting warned for 10 minutes until 1:12:50. We will begin as soon as we have eight people on the screen because it, it should be a brief meeting, and we don't want to interfere with the rest of our schedule. So please, if you are interested in the board meeting, please be ready at 10 minutes of one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I gather Epsil's adjourned.